What I said was fundamentally changed the character of St. John's County. My philosophy is this, and obviously we may have different philosophies. But I think if you have a problem in your community, the first people that should be trying to solve the problem is those in the community. Second is the church. Third, if the problem is bigger than the community, those are your neighbors and the church. Then third, work it out to nonprofits. Nonprofits again, they're doing it for the love of the game a lot of times. They're closest to the people, they know what the problem is. If those first three don't work, then government to me is the fourth. And hopefully, smallest step in the process. Government should be there to fill in the missing gap, to fill in the missing hole. So I don't want to open it up to a big government program because I think so much of what's special about St. John's County is that we've always done it locally. We don't even give a sales tax. How many people in this room know that your county government doesn't give anything from the sales tax? We don't. We don't. We're a small, efficient government. And by opening it up to a housing authority, I just think that's the wrong direction to take. I believe there's other ways to get the job.
No, you're, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker. Just on the statement you made as far as the county not receiving from the sales tax, except for your state. Then is that due to the high incomes, the high range of incomes? Is that, how does that work in regards to our county receiving?
Well, it's so interesting. No. I mean, the short answer is no, that this county has opted never to charge a local option sales tax, except for the half a percentage. That, so six percent of your sales tax goes to the state, it goes to Tallahassee. They have formula, they get the bean counters together, and they say, okay, St. John's County will give you this much back. And we have to go hat in hand. I was over in Tallahassee during legislative session, asking for our money back. We paid about three hundred million dollars into the state's budget, and they gave us, last year they gave us twenty-four million back. And it was a reprieve. And I was grateful, because we need all we can get. This year I'm hoping that we can get sixty-five. But that's fingers crossed. So six percent goes to the state, a half a percent goes to your school district, and your county government. The county government includes the sheriff's department, drainage districts, road transportation infrastructure, ball fields, parks, and rucks. You get nothing from the sales tax. So all these tourists come in here, and they pay nothing into county government. And we had a sales tax increase on the ballot last year, and it failed miserably to the two sixty-three percent.
You spoke about basically keeping the solutions to a lot of our in-county problems, local, not bringing in government agencies. What about local programs like Restore St. Johns? And how it was meant to benefit the people of this county, yet we're still waiting to see the benefits of programs like Restore St. Johns? Because from what I've been able to see, the program itself is rather inefficient. And I can say that not just as someone who has seen it from the outside, but as somebody who's gone through that program. What are we doing at the local level to see through it? That the programs like this have are efficient and actually benefiting the people, instead of all the agencies to take over programs like that?
You would have to explain to me more about Restore St. Johns. I can't say that I know a lot about the program. What was it enacted, right?
I want to say this was, had to be about five, maybe six years ago. During the last, uh...
Hurricane Matthew.
Hurricane Matthew.
It was a grant, Hurricane Matthew. It was, it was two thousand seventeen grant, Hurricane Matthew. And it was to restore and rebuild from the Hurricane Matthews.
The damage done.
And the, and the program has ran really shockingly. Um, I don't know if it hit your desk or not, but they never heard of it. Yeah. It was more so in District Three and District Two that had a lot of damage going on.
To the point that...
Restore St. Johns.
We actually had people having to write in, past the county level, past the state level, onto the national level, to get this program to basically do what it was meant to do. And the only reason I bring it up is because that's also part of this problem what happened here in St. John's County. Because while a lot of people were waiting for this program to help them restore their homes here, these people were being bombarded with phone calls. Hey, we understand that your property is unusable right now. We want to buy. Those same developers, like, who you're courting to come in, are also preying on the people who are waiting for the services from the county, so that they can stay.
What's the source of funding for Restore St. Johns?
Better of Grant.
Roberto, can you help me understand this?
Yeah, let me help you.
Because I understand exactly what you're saying.
All right, so when Matthew came by, HUD gave out the CDV EDR, which is CDV disaster recovery funds, ninety million dollars for the county. Out of those ninety million dollars, thirty million dollars were set aside to build multifamily affordable housing, which is some micro heights and Victoria Crossing. The rest was done, was divided into half. One for infrastructure, which has been done already, and very successful. And the other one for rehab. That's the one you're talking about. So we have had some hiccups, but the majority, we had like a hundred and sixty, or a hundred and forty, two hundred and sixty cases of rehab that we had due to Matthew's damage. And strictly, you have to have a nexus with that, with that storm. And, and we have many successful stories. But we are aware of what you're saying, and we're taking each case by case, and taking care of it with the owners, making sure that they're satisfied, making sure that they're happy with the product and the services that we're providing.
You're weird.
Some of this is excessive.
Well, there's, there's, there've been very much, there've been, there've been folks that have new houses, new mobile homes. I mean, there've been rehab that have been very successful. But like everything in life, unfortunately, there's some that, they're not fully successful, but we're very, trying very hard to, to make them successful.
If you'll send me specific addresses to folks that aren't getting the help, I'll be happy to call the staff and see if there's anything I can do. Because it never, it never happens. I own very small businesses, okay? Little jewelry shops. I've got one at the Avenue's Mall, and one at the St. John's Town Center. I need to have fifteen total employees. If I want something done in my business, it gets done. Because it needs to be done. We've got to help our customers. We've got to take care of the staff issue. We've got to, we've got to hire somebody while I'm putting stuff out on Indeed, I'm handing out flyers in the mall. But whatever I got to do, I can go do it. And government, I have been perpetually frustrated with how slow it works. When I see we have a need in the county, and I say, let's go do it. For it to get done can take years. And, and this is, if it's not, if there's anything that we can do at the county level to move the funds from Restore St. Johns forward, I'll do it.
Okay, so back to, I guess this is along the lines of solutions to sustain current residents. Are low-income housing, is, is our, excuse me, is low-income housing available for a couple with two incomes?
The short answer is yes. I think HUD makes their adjustments based on how many residents are bringing income into the household. So this is, again, I, I, I'm not a subject matter expert. I just play one on TV, okay? Forgive me, but I believe that it's eighty percent of AMI based on a two-income home, or even a three-income home, or even a four-income home. So you can qualify if you have multiple incomes coming into, is that correct?
Absolutely, Robert, for sure. Uh, you, you have a scale of family compositions. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven members. And then you have the income limitation, the income, the highest limitation that you have. And if you have four, then there's a certain number that you have to meet to be able to qualify for, for, for housing, according to HUD.
Did you want to respond to your question, or did you get the answer you was looking for as far as your question?
When it comes to low-income housing, so like you said earlier about, you can't pay nobody ten dollars an hour or fifteen dollars an hour. So if you've got two people in the house making fifteen dollars an hour or more, it's impossible to use that, that whatever that margin is to be in, in the low income, right?
No, 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 absolutely. If you have two people who are half income, as long as they meet that income limit established by HUD. Uh, it's, 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 it's pretty much a threshold. Like, for example, it might be, I don't know, I don't have the skill right here, uh, but it could be two families cannot make more than maybe, and I'm talking about HUD housing only, okay? Um, that make more than forty thousand dollars, or it's fifty thousand dollars, uh, and they would qualify. But it's, I have to scale, and I'll be happy to send it to you, just to look at it. Every year, they revise.
John, did you see that? I'm explaining that, with how that, uh, John is...
I'm actually calling up the schedule right now.
Yeah, John is, um, he's the vice president, overseer, reporter for, um, the Genesis Properties, which is in Woodlawn. Um, and so he, Woodlawn still carries HUD. Um, San Marco Heights, Victoria Crossing is not HUD. It's considered income-based, um, which is taxed.
Credit-based.
Credit-based, yeah. It's a total, it's a totally different program. Okay, so let me tell you what he means by AMI. That's average, median income. That means whatever the average is, and the average in two feet. Yeah, they put it together. But John can explain it, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so John Farrell, Genesis Management, J E Properties. Uh, and with Ms. Janethel, property manager at Woodlawn Terrace, and Ms. Amani Watson, we manage Woodlawn Terrace, which is seventy-five apartments, um, HUD program, and layered with, uh, home, Florida Home program. And so just, just to go over those income limits, so you had the question, so a two-person household based at fifty percent AMI, that would be, uh, to qualify to live at Woodlawn, um, you would be at thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty at the ceiling and lower. If, and then you would qualify. And then, of course, you'd be responsible for thirty, thirty percent. Yes, ma'am. And, and I can absolutely send this to you, and Roberto will...
We can send it to you, yeah.
But for, for two people to qualify, fifty percent AMI, the maximum, the maximum, uh, annual income for that household of two would be thirty-three thousand. And if it, at sixty percent, it would be forty thousand. Um, and then it goes all the way up to, to seven people, to eight people, actually.
So, so basically, you need to be single, making under thirty thousand.
How long?
Yeah, they go always in the household.
I'll, I'll be happy to send you the scale from all the latest ones. Let's get together after the meeting, and I'll be happy to do that for you. Yeah.
So the next question is, um, going off of that, what is being done about rent in St. John's County?
I mean, again, we're, we're working with the same programs. Is there a HUD-controlled rental program available? We're trying to increase supply. I know we've denied a number of developments this year, believe it or not. But I think Henry Dean said we've denied as many as we've approved in the last year and a half. We're saying no to, to what I think are bad developments, while at the same time trying to bring enough, bring enough units online, help meet the demand. It's, it's a tough needle that we're trying to thread. Because we work for a whole lot of different folks in St. John's County. And some folks don't want any more homes ever to be built in St. John's County. But that raises the price of housing. If nothing ever gets approved, then you have a limited supply. So, so then you have some folks in St. John's County who say, well, we need denser and this, the only way to get less expensive rental rates, the only way to get less expensive housing, is to have denser development. That's just a fact. So my, I'm from Tallahassee, Florida, was born there, lived there until I was sixteen years old. In my hometown, they have the same issues with affordability. They have the same issues with trying to house their teachers, nurses, sheriff's department, workforce. But they are able to build an eight-story high-rise on two acres that's going to house, that has three hundred units inside. Guess what? That's a pretty affordable housing project. In St. John's County, we can't do it. We have height restrictions. We've got people who show up to every single meeting. Even if it's, even if we were going to house the baby Jesus and his mother Mary, we would have people showing up at the county commission meetings to tell us not to vote for her. So, so we're trying to, if you believe like I do, that you're elected by people and you're there to serve them, it's difficult to know what to do. We've got competing voices telling you what the best course of action is to take. So it's, it's difficult to find out what the right thing to do is every single time. And I'm not saying we got it right every single time. I'm just explaining the situation.
Okay. Would you, can you read, or, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, yes, I have one more question. It says...
Just also to add to that, annually HUD does an FMR fair market rent study, and they publish, they publish those rents for the area, everywhere in the country. And that can be found online. And again, we can direct you to that location to go look that up.
Um, I just wanted, hey, this is Catalina, I see you, babe, Habitat. Um, can you kind of give us, just generally, before we leave that particular subject point, how does Habitat determine AMI in their future homeowners? What is your criteria when it comes to AMI? Do you have a certain threshold, thirty percent, forty percent, that you use just to have, or will something be there for you?
So, um, what we do right now, we are between the thirty percent and the eighty percent AMI, and we have to follow the HUD bracket, I mean, like, the income bracket. So for example, as of right now, because we haven't get the new, or, I don't know, but I haven't received the new, for twenty twenty-three, the new income qualification. But as, the last one is for one-person household, the minimum income requirement, I mean, that is the lowest, that is thirty percent, it will be like one thousand, three hundred and forty, something like that. And they cannot make more than three thousand, I believe so, something like that. And it goes higher and higher depending on the, or the size of the, and this is per month. And, but this is gross monthly income. That's something that you guys have to keep in, I mean, consider. It's like, it's not what you guys get paid after they take taxes or everything. No, they just do it, it's gross, before they take taxes and all that stuff. So sometimes that helps as well. So that's, that's our criteria right now. We serve the people from the thirty percent up to the eighty percent AMI.
So as the developments come up for Habitat, with different communities come up, will they be changing home styles?
Like, uh, okay.
Design, I'm sorry.
Design. We have the new development coming up. There is Volusia Woods. Uh, it will be thirty-six homes. Yes, the house is going to be a little different. I mean, the architectural area is going to be a little different. It's going to be two-bedroom house and three-bedroom house in that new development. The difference with this one, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with Canapio's, the one that we just finished. If you know, that one is sharing the parking lot. In these ones that we're going to build, it's going to be, each house is going to be, um, having their driveway. No garage. Habitat, we don't, I mean, since I've been here and like for the last five years or six, we don't build garage. We're trying to just get the most that we can from the houses. So that's, but yes, the, um, we will have like the, um, the last, the final house in Canapio's. And the public is more than welcome to come and see that last house. That's going to be the kind of model of houses that we're going to have in the new development. But it's, it's little later, like, not much, probably like nine hundred is for food, between nine hundred to a hundred. Um, but it's still there cute, and, you know, coastal style.
Um, so the, the term workforce, the question is, um, does that include, are you all including CNAs, cleaning staff, restaurant workers? And I think that was asked earlier, but if you could redefine, give the definition of workforce housing.
I, I just imagine that everyone else includes, but there's no way that someone who had the job that I have, which is a retail worker, there's no way they can afford to buy two hundred and sixty thousand dollar house.
Correct.
So, so the workforce housing zoning designation isn't going to help those folks.
I was going to, I was reading, and so...
Excuse me, I have a question.
I'm just wondering, Chairman Waiders, I know you've said, or I've heard it said, that we have a need of a thousand to seventeen hundred new affordable housing units per year. I've heard something in that category, right? And my...
Uh, that's what people tell me.
Okay. And so my concern is, if we're, this is not possible for churches and nonprofits to provide. My concern is that we're going to have to find other ways to do this. I mean, I love Habitat, and I love all the nonprofits we have, and the churches working in these areas. That's great, but I believe the problem is bigger than, than they can take care of. Um, so I wonder, at least could the county come in and help nonprofits by paying, by taking care of the infrastructure? In the past, we did that way back. Uh, the county provided the infrastructure for nonprofits like, I think Habitat, could get a whole lot more done quickly if they had the infrastructure provided. The same would be true with, now, I know you can't answer this for the county, but you hear where I'm going. I think we, we need more county help. And you know, I want, I want the HUD help because I want the grants, and, and I want direct access to those vouchers. But I understand we're, we're at an impasse there. But I still think to get to the, what we need in affordable housing, my concern is we're going to have to go beyond just what nonprofits and, as good as they all are, nonprofits and churches can do. Too big.
I'm just interject. We're, we're at seven fifty-three. We've got thirty more minutes to stick to the commission. So, okay. You've got to get some good questions, get some good questions in, because don't let little terms mess you up. Like, what we can't do. We have to find solutions here. I'm just looking around the room, and I see, there's people in this room that have lived in this community for sixty years. I'm just sitting here looking around at a generational, a family member. So you got thirty minutes to, uh, really get some good questions in. So come on, Tree.
Okay, we're going to go back past the payment, and then I have a question.
Yeah, come on, pass it.
Uh, dear, but I'm waiting.
Okay, okay. Uh, our next question is, um, who is over the development off of West Ninth Street? Um, or are they Airbnb rentals?
Some, some of that might be within the city limits. St. John's Street is outside of my jurisdiction. I'm not exactly sure.
West Ninth.
He, he wouldn't, he wouldn't know.
Some of these things were approved prior to life. I've been a commissioner for two and a half years. It's felt like, like longer. Just been a commissioner for two and a half years.
He, he wouldn't know. Couldn't, about that question about Ninth Street, are we talking about them seven houses that are on Ninth Street in the, um...
Yes.
In the mall, whatever that war, they're in the wetlands. Yeah, that, that's a bad situation. What happened if someone, a builder came in, he built seven houses straight from the weapons, and they still haven't figured out how to do Septic yet, and it got approved? And I'm thinking that's what you're talking about, right?
And the Septic sits pretty much right at the front door.
Yeah, I'll take you on a market tour to see.
It's ridiculous.
But it's, that's a good point, because when we look at the hundred and twenty parks that CRA owns, one of the questions came up from Road and Bridge, was that, um, some of our properties sit in wetlands. So we're looking at, how is that possible? When you look at Wade's, uh, I don't know if it used to be Wade's Junkyard, or Wade's, something.
Wade Mills, yes.
But it was something like, it was all wetlands. It was a swamp.
Not a development.
And so we want to make sure we identify that. Thank you for bringing Ninth Street up. Just remember that when I take you by that Ninth Street. I'll take you by there and look at it. They haven't figured out the Septic yet, but they figured price out though. At three sixty.
They haven't finished it yet. They can't finish it. They don't have food.
That's a good point.
They have been something, but it ain't nothing but a problem.
Yeah, it's not.
Because when you walk out the door, you're going to step on the Septic tank, and you will step on the drain field, and the three that got those, um, garages, they ain't digging up the, unless you got, or you going to go in there.
Yeah.
Why didn't you tell me about that before that started?
I'll take you by there.
Yeah, I rode, I rode through there the other day, and, I mean, on the road, I can see, I'm even with the window.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And I think someone from the county prevented me from holding for that.
Yeah.
So you drive by, take a look.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll come by anytime. When was that approved?
About last year, twenty twenty-three.
The, the house was built last year?
No.
You were saying to me, it was permitted last year.
It's always been permitted, yeah.
It's about three sixty percent. Just driving everybody else's property tax up, and it's just not suited for someone who's... Uh, what pops up is a road this high, and the garage is just low. So it is just weird. It doesn't make sense. But it's seven of order.
Yep.
It's about to be tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, our, our next question is, what is considered HUD housing in St. John's County besides Woodlawn Terrace?
Well, we've got, we've got lists that Robert shared with me earlier today, so I'm not sure if this all qualifies as a doubt. But I know we've got Victoria Crossing.
Okay, that's a good one.
Victoria Crossing and San Marco Heights Commissioners, tax credit.
Tax credit.
Uh, so there are sixty-eight in line, but we do have, like, apartments, move on. We do have apartments that are subsidized by HUD, that without counting the vouchers that are, 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 uh, given to folks that qualify that come from, from Jackson-Bingel Housing Authority as well. So it's, it's the combination of being, you got two, two, two ways to go here with HUD. You either carry your subsidy with you as a voucher, or you have subsidy in the apartment that you move into, but you must qualify.
So, Robert, this list, Casa Del Mar, Elliot Manor, Hastings Manor, Huguenot Harbor, is that not all?
It could be a combination, commissioner, of tax credit and some HUD apartments as well being subsidized.
So that list, uh, about twelve?
Yes.
You ever say twelve apartments?
I can find out for each one what kind of subsidy they, they have.
I think that could be helpful.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I'll take care of it.
But San Marco Heights, Victoria Crossing.
Our tax credit is sixty-eight in line.
Yeah, question. Um, what do you guys expect, um, from the people in the HUD, where you say Woodlawn and Huguenot Harbor? Those people live there for a teen amount of years, and you know, growing, we all be planning on building more, because you say HUD, but then it's like, everything is income-based, or...
You're asking me what you guys expect?
What do you guys be expanding, like, that, that one apartment complex on two oh seven by, um, Silver Creek and all that? That's what's supposed to be HUD housing, subsidized, no?
No. It's, no.
Workforce housing.
It's, um, it's based, it's based on your taxes. It has, HUD is not in there, and that's why a lot of people are getting turned down. It has nothing to do with HUD.
Yeah. But I will say, I will say this, we did something with, uh, ability housing. October of last year, we were, we were able to defer impact fees. Back in two thousand eighteen, St. John's County Board of Commissioners raised impact fees to their statutory maximum. This was to meet the demand for residents that had developed, paid for the infrastructure, right? Stop letting developers off the hook. So they raised impact fees to the statutory maximum. That's made it difficult for affordable housing developers to come in and build affordable houses, because they still have to pay that statutory maximum. We can't make one set of rules for this housing development and not for that housing development. I do think, as I'm sitting here, just, just thinking through different scenarios that have come before me, perhaps there's something that can be done. And I'm spitballing here, forgive me. This is not going to be, you know, this is not how you make a motion on board. But if we can defer impact fees, certainly there's something that we can do to, to work with impact fees. Housing is going to meet a certain criteria, so. It's not as bleak as it seems. There's also, and I like to think I'm taking credit for this, okay? But it's not, it's not me. But I made the comment that housing is becoming a crisis in two years out of the rest of it. We now, as a result of my comments, we now have two companion bills moving through the State House and the State Senate that are going to allow us to use more of the shit funds. These are the, Roberto can talk in more detail. But these are affordable housing funds that usually get... that are going to allow us to use more of the shit funds, these are the, Roberto can talk more detail, but these are affordable housing funds that usually get swept into some other bucket to to get spent somewhere else. For the first time, we're gonna have more affordable housing funds coming from the state to help supplement efforts here in St. John's County than before. We have talked to staff about this, they're they're getting, so there's, there's reason to be cautiously optimistic about what's coming out of this, uh, legislative session this year as it relates to affordable housing, the state's doing more than they ever have before.
And also, go ahead one question. Um, like, say, for instance, me, I'm, I'm trying to get a first-time home buyer, and, um.